Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. 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 Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, November 25, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Lado, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viregos, Weiss, Sain, Pedia, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, we do have, I believe, one presentation scheduled. Mr. Garcetti.
Good to see you. Good to see you as well. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues and everybody here in Council Chambers and listening and watching on Channel 35. I appreciate being able to make a presentation on a Tuesday because of the short week, but it's our one opportunity to say goodbye to somebody in Hollywood who has had a tremendous impact in the revitalization and the renaissance of Hollywood Boulevard and of greater Hollywood, Mr. Russ Joyner, who unfortunately is going to be leaving Los Angeles to take a job in Las Vegas. Many of you know Russ through a number of the hats that he wears. Right now, he's Vice President and General Manager of Hollywood and Highland, the really catalyst project that has helped Hollywood become not only one of the most dynamic tourist destinations in America again, but also a place where locals now can go and enjoy themselves, a place now where the Renaissance Hotel next door is the number-one hotel in terms of occupancy in the entire city. And Russ's leadership has not only been there in his day-to-day job, but throughout the Hollywood community. He has been President of the Hollywood -- of the Board of the Hollywood Entertainment Business Improvement District. He has been Chair of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. He has been somebody who tirelessly gives his time. He's one of those go-to people. I think every organization has one, every entity, every community organization has somebody who actually does the work, gets things done. And Russ has been just that. He's been somebody with a great sense of humor, somebody with always a bright smile, and that can-do spirit that has allowed the rest of Hollywood to feel good about what's going on there. He has worked in other places in the country before, in New Jersey. He also worked in Culver City as General Manager for many years, four years of the Fox Hills Mall. And I think Mr. Labange knows this, but he also had a brief career in the National Football League, which he wasn't going to get away from here without talking about, at least a little bit, with the Pittsburgh Steelers and the Indianapolis Colts. Russ, I just wanted to say on behalf of the entire community of Hollywood and on behalf of myself, what a joy it has been these last two years to work with you and for the last few years for the vision that you've brought to Hollywood. I think we will look back on this time, we had some growing pains, but we will look back on this time when we finally changed the momentum. And that piece of this city, which is really the jewel and the crown for all of us, Hollywood is a lot of the reason why this city grew the way that it did. It's the number-one reason why people still come to visit Los Angeles, that we finally did something in making sure that that empty shell that had become Hollywood was actually filled with meaning and content and community again. So, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, thank you, Russ, and we would love to hear a few words from you before you go off to Las Vegas. And he has promised me that if council members ever need a place to crash in Las Vegas, his home is available. So, thank you very much, Russ. Everybody will please give him a round of applause.
Mr. Labange.
President. And Mr. Garcetti, thank you. It is so true what you said. Each of us in our districts throughout the city have someone who's a mover, who's a unifier, who takes community agendas, who knows how to make things happen. And Russ Joyner certainly did that above and beyond your job. Your job was to make a commercial enterprise successful at the corner of Hollywood and Highland. And you have made that successful. You have made that a very great place to go to. But at the same time, you found time and energy and sacrifice from your own family and children to participate in the community, be involved in the Chamber of Commerce, to be involved in the Business Improvement District, to show leadership in that area. And I just am proud to know you and to know what you've done. And it's Las Vegas's gain. Las Vegas won today because you're going to Las Vegas. It's our loss. But we hope you could spread the word. When all those people are down and out, sitting on that long boulevard in Las Vegas, you can say, "Come to Hollywood where your dreams really come true." And keep promoting Los Angeles. Thank you very much, Russ Joyner, to you and your staff.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Garcetti, Councilman Labange, members of the council, thank you very much for this honor. It's truly much appreciated. You know, it's truly been a labor of love for the past five and a half years. It didn't feel like work when you surround yourself with great people. Some of my staff members are here today, Ken Gillette, Dan Chesmire, Aurora Abini, and Melanie Vasquez, who were really sort of the inspiration, as well as people like Laron Gruber at the Hollywood Chamber and Kerry Morrison at the Business Improvement District, that really helped to make whatever I have done just a wonderful experience. And I hope I was able to give just a portion of what I was able to get out of all that cooperative effort that I've obtained from the many people in the community of Hollywood. Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you when you come to Las Vegas. We'll be back in Hollywood on regular occasions, and I look forward to crossing paths in the years to come. Thank you very much.
We also recognize Ms. Perry for an introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce a new friend and a special visitor today. This is Ms. Lydia Perron. Lydia, why don't you stand up and say hello to everybody. Lydia is visiting today through a Walk a Mile program, which was created by the Coalition to End Hunger and Homelessness. Lydia is a veteran of the United States Army, a mother of three, with one son currently in Baghdad. She is at this time a resident at St. Vincent Cardinal Manning Center in the Ninth Council District, Skid Row Community, and is studying at night at Belmont Adult School to obtain additional computer certification. And she's visiting here today as part of the program to learn more about her community and about how the city operates and just to have a new experience. I want to welcome her here and to thank the Coalition as well for developing this program. It's a wonderful idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And while you have the floor, can I ask you to lead us in our salute to the flag?
Thank you very much. Please rise and put your right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves and Ms. Han seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves and Mr. Smith seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, items noticed for public hearings, items one through three are street lighting districts. Council should open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to December 16.
Members, items one through three now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and without objection, continue to December 16, three weeks from today. Next items, please.
Item number four is also a public hearing item, and the applicant consents to a continuance to January 7, 2004.
Okay, members, item number four. We do have a request to continue this matter to January 7, seeing no objection. Item four is continued.
Next items, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have been held, items nine, excuse me, five through 13. Items five, six, and seven are confirmations to the Native American Indian Commission.
Okay, let's hold commission appointments temporarily on the desk. We'll return to these matters first before taking items called special.
And also, I'm sorry, item number 10 is confirmation of the General Manager, the LA Housing Department, and Salary Establishment.
Okay, we'll do the same. Colleagues, items five through 13 now before us. These matters have had public hearings. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. And if there's no such motion, do we have any requests for specials, Ms. Perry?
Item eight.
Item eight? Call special by Ms. Perry. Mr. Parks?
That's the same. Also, it's connected with 52.
Okay, item eight, and we'll consider those two matters concurrently, item 52 as well. Five through 13, any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, 14 through 42. Item 14 is a confirmation of a commissioner. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll hold item 14 temporarily on the desk. Without objection, items 14 through 42 are now before us. Mr. Weiss?
Thirty, please.
Thirty called special by Mr. Weiss. I do have cards on items 27 and 30. We'll call those items special. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address this council. We shall deem the public hearings opened and closed. Any further specials, Mr. Labange?
Mr. Reyes asked at 48, be continued one day.
Okay, we'll get there in just a minute. Okay, we'll get there in just a minute. Mr. Labange?
I see, I'm on 48, I'm off to it. 29, though, I'd like to ask that special.
29 called special by Mr. Labange.
I think you want to continue.
Any other specials, 14 through 42?
For a week, continue 29 for a week.
Okay, request to continue item 29 for one week. Is there any objection? Seeing none, item 29 is continued. Any other specials, items 14 through 42? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
The next items, 43 through 47, are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Let's hold all closed session items on the desk.
The next items on the supplemental agenda are 48 through 52.
We have a request to continue item 48 for one day. Without objection, item 48 shall be continued. Mr. Parks wishes to call item 52 special to be considered concurrently with item number eight, leaving items 49, 50, and 51. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, satisfying the public hearings. Any specials? Mr. Garcetti.
When you finish with the specials, can we reconsider 38? I'm sorry, I was in the press room taking picture.
Okay, 49, 50, and 51, any specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Garcetti moves reconsideration on item 38. Let's open the roll and reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 38 is now back before us. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, item 38 today is a motion declaring a homeless shelter crisis in the City of Los Angeles. Traditionally, this has been done every year when we experience cold weather or wet weather. We made the -- well, we progressed this year, I should say, and we made the realization that here in Los Angeles, we have wet weather oftentimes when it's not the winter months. We oftentimes have cold weather off-season as well, and that we have people whose lives are at risk throughout this city year-round. And I want to praise the leadership of this entire council and of the mayor in making earlier this year these shelter beds open year-round. What this motion will do, though, colleagues, is now that we have experienced this truly cold snap that is before us, when many more bodies are out there on the streets every single night, is this makes sure that we open up about an additional 15 to 2,000 shelter beds a night than what we have year-round. This will give people some place to go. Hopefully, they will be part of the continuum of care, and this has been a historic year in terms of the financial resources that we've been putting at a very difficult fiscal time for all of us into the problem of homelessness. We have more than doubled the amount of money we put in from city discretionary money that isn't federal, just federal money from our general fund, and we've had that matched by the county as well, the advocacy of Councilmember Perry, who went to the Board of Supervisors and asked them to step up and to match us. But we will have with this program about 2,300 beds a night that will be available, shelter beds. That joins a number of other shelter beds and transitional shelters and in transitional housing. But colleagues, we have about 80,000 people in the county a night who do not have a place to sleep, and each year, we have a population about the size of a council district. So when we have an idea of how far we have to go still, I know that this will pass unanimously since it just did a second ago, but I want to thank you for your support on this and your support on making sure that that problem of homelessness doesn't escape any of our eyes. And we really have leadership in the county level through this Blue Ribbon Task Force now to finally do something and to hopefully come up with a plan to end homelessness in Los Angeles in the next 10 years. But the first step this winter is making sure that we do declare this crisis out there. We know this is an ongoing crisis, but this will allow about 1,500 more people to sleep safely tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Item 38 is now again before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, that matter is approved.
With on that, item 50, please.
We will send item 38 and 50 forthwith. Next item, Madam Clerk. Items five, six, and seven are confirmations to the Native American Indian Commission. Community report is recommending approval of the confirmations. All right, can we ask the three commission appointees to come forward, please? Members, we have the three recommended appointees before us. Let me recognize Mr. Labange.
Good morning, and good morning, Commissioners to be. Thank you very much for your service to the city and to the county. Could each of you take just a moment and tell us about your passion of how important this role you're going to serve for Los Angeles as an appointee to this commission?
Hi, I'm Rose Clark and have been a previous mayoral appointee to the Indian Commission as well. I just wanted to let everybody know that actually November is Native American Heritage Month. Even though Los Angeles is home to the largest urban Indian population in the nation, we continue to be underserved and invisible when compared to other larger, more visible ethnic groups. My passion is really has been working on bringing more visibility to the American Indian community here, and we have really a huge problem in terms of the lack of data that's available on American Indians. Oftentimes, we're misidentified as other ethnic groups, we're often lumped into other categories, and this creates a problem in terms of having data to support the need for resources and for services. And so that's what I plan to continue to work on with the city, is to make sure that the reports that are provided by the city actually include data on American Indians so that we can really see what the need is among our community.
Good morning. My name is Dave Rambo. I'm the Executive Director for United American Indian Involvement, a program that's been -- was incorporated in the City of Los Angeles in June 1974. I myself have been working in the city in nonprofit programs for American Indians since September of 1974. Our program, United American Indian Involvement, started out as a Skid Row program, a crisis program on Fifth and Winston Street, or Fifth and Main, and was there until the year 2000. I started working with that program. I've been working with Indian programs since I came to Los Angeles. My passion is that we provide quality care to the American Indian population within the City of Los Angeles. I've been doing this for almost 30 years. I'm going to continue to do this. We've been able to bring millions of dollars, federal dollars, into the City of Los Angeles to run our programs. We just recently got a contract for a NAP program, which is one-year-old. It's one of the newest programs and one of the only programs we've gotten from the city. My passion is to make sure that the American Indian population is served with quality services and long-term services and to bring as many dollars into the city as we possibly can from other sources, including the federal sources.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sarah Dear. I'm a citizen of the Muskogee Creek Nation of Oklahoma. I'm a recent new resident of Los Angeles. I moved here about 15 months ago. I work at the Tribal Law and Policy Institute, which is located in West Hollywood. It's a nonprofit organization owned and operated by Native Americans to improve the systems of justice in Indian country and for all Native Americans. Prior to that, I worked in the Department of Justice in Washington, D.C. for three years, and I was inclined to move to Los Angeles because of the opportunities that were available to me here to do more grassroots work in community, where I couldn't do that at the federal level. So I welcome any questions you have, and thank you.
No, Madam President, members, we can see we have three very passionate people who are going to help us do our job, who are going to help the County of Los Angeles do its job. I appreciate each and every one of you for your help. Dr. Clark, your dedication, Mr. Rambo, your dedication, and Ms. Dear, your dedication, because it's important for all of us to have a better knowledge of everyone's interest, everyone's needs. So I strongly salute you and look forward to working with you. Let you know each and every one of us are open, and it's up to you now to help push the agenda, up to you to bring light on the agenda so we can find the right statistics that are there. Because we don't realize that this urban center of Los Angeles is the largest Native American population in the country, and we all realize, we talk of the great heritage of Native American people for this country, and now I think it's very important that we articulate that so we can find ways to help out in all different areas. Thank you all for your service to this city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Let me recognize this time Councilmember Padilla.
Other speakers on the queue, I'll wait. I'll wait my turn.
All right, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much for your service and your volunteerism. I think you brought up a very good point. Ms. Dear?
Clark.
Oh, I'm sorry, Clark. Dr. Clark, you brought up a very good point. There's a lot of Native Americans, matter of fact, a very large group of Native Americans who are constituents of the City of Los Angeles, who are taxpayers, who are individuals who have needs just like any other community. But the Native American community is very unique in the sense that, in my personal opinion, that's the only community that genocide was performed on, on these lands that we stand on today. So they have a very unique perspective of having that history. But unfortunately, it takes generations and sometimes hundreds of years for a community to reckon with those issues and to set them in a motion where people are seen as equals. One of the things that I'm hoping this commission will focus on is education and certainly on the issue of higher education and the lack thereof in that community. That community is impacted by the lack of higher education more than any other in this country, and I'm sure here in Los Angeles, there is no difference, that it is in fact an area that is truly, truly challenged and something that we need to do something about. And because of that lack of education, both whether it be K through 12 or higher education, what you have, in my opinion, you have a contribution of that particular population contributing disproportionately to our prison population, disproportionately to alcoholism and other substance abuses, and those are issues that no community should have to contend with, certainly at the levels that the Native American community contends with. I just want to offer myself to all of you and the entire commission to make sure that you understand that if you ever need resources for that, for those purposes, I will do everything that I can with the contacts and the relationships that I have within the Native American community to assist you in that manner.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Let me recognize this time Councilmember Perry.
Thank you, and I also wanted to rise and say I'm very appreciative of the fact that you, one, have continued to do what you've been doing and also to bring in new members as well. Having worked on the census the last time around and being very frustrated with perceptions and practices at the federal level on distinguishing people and counting people, and then having to suffer the effects of that, I will be very interested in working very closely with you as we move through the next 10 years and the counts that will take place in between time to make sure that we are much more definitive this time around with not only this community but all ethnic communities, and making sure that we really have a better effort this time of getting our fair share in the count as well. So I'm looking forward to working more closely with the commission, and thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, just wanted to rise and echo the comments of Mr. Labange, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Perry, and others in support, not only of the commissioners before us, but to take advantage of this opportunity to highlight what unfortunately I think is a very little-known commission, a very little-known commission, but a very important commission. Previous speakers have talked, not only about the merits of the commissioners before us, and I support all three of you wholeheartedly, but I just wanted to repeat some of the comments that I made in committee about this commission being a valuable and important vehicle for this city and all the people of Los Angeles to recognize the contributions of Native Americans in the past and today as well, but also because of a unique political climate and timing for this discussion, I think more so than in previous years, and Native Americans have never had it easy in this country or even in the city, but I'm very concerned about a lot of rhetoric that we've heard over the last couple of months, not just in Los Angeles, but throughout Southern California, throughout the state for that matter, whether you're for or you're against gaming on sovereign lands in California. There unfortunately has been a lot of misrepresentation and a lot of misinformation that's been put out there in political conversations, and I think it's yet another layer of injustice for a people who are the true Native Americans, the people who inhabited this land first. And we have a lot to learn from and a lot to respect about the Native American communities and society. They're just as diverse as the rest of us, but whether it's their history, their culture, their oral history that's passed on from generation to generation, their philosophies and values, I think there's much to be envied, a lot for us to learn from in these regards. And I just, for one, wanted to stand up and be a voice of that concern, of that support because of the abuse that's historically been given to Native American populations throughout the country, but, you know, the Los Angeles region, Southern California is no different, but also highlight that it isn't over. The abuse, the scapegoating is not over, and we cannot rest until it is over. And so, colleagues, this is an important commission. It's unfortunately a little-known commission, but a very important commission, and I'm just thankful for utilizing this opportunity to bring some of that to light. And I don't know if maybe some of the commissioners here want to add a few words on that note.
Well, I just wanted to thank all of you. Definitely, I think we are a little-known commission, and hopefully in this upcoming years, as we're been reappointed, that we can bring some more light to these issues and actually meet with each of you to actually give you a description of what's been going on in the community here. It's been a hard path and one that we've been dealing with a lot, even within the county. When you have so few leaders in this community, it gets difficult to try and learn how to navigate the system, so I'm hoping that we can seek assistance from each of you on how to navigate the city system.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and congratulations to everybody. Dr. Clark, Ms. Dear, and of course, Mr. Rambo, it's nice sitting down with you earlier to talk about a number of different issues. And the council district that I represent, which is Echo Park and Silver Lake and Hollywood and Atwater Village, has a very strong Indian population. One of the things I wanted to let you know, I'm sure you followed it somewhat, but this council passed a resolution about the Southwest Museum, and right now, the interaction between the Autry and the Southwest Museum and the potential partnerships that exist in really keeping that, which is now the largest private collection of Indian art in the country, alive and making that vibrant, especially at a point when we have the gold line coming down, is something that this council really stands beside you in saying any way that we can help you and vice versa in reaching out to the folks at the Autry Museum to really continue what they've been able to do so successfully there, but make sure that it continues also at the Southwest Museum is going to be critical. I also wanted to lend my support to, as Chair of the Housing Community Economic Development Committee, to raise the profile of the commission. If you ever want to do a joint hearing specifically on poverty or housing issues, economic development issues of the Indian or Native American population here, that we could do that as a joint hearing. So please let me know if that's something that you're interested in doing as well. And just lastly, you know, when we look at the heritage of this city in particular and the freeways each of us drives every single day, which went over where we used to have the roads and before that, the trails, which really mirror the watershed of the entire city, I mean, we drive on the 5 and the 101, and those are there because of Indian trails that existed many, many years ago, and looking at trying to bring that heritage back, I know there's a movement right now for kind of a heritage trail or something like that that would look at everything from Chinatown to Little Tokyo to where Little Italy used to be, and the Indian sites that are a part of kind of the backbone along the L.A. River and the Southwest Museum obviously being an important part of that, is a critical way of us being able to market our city and to share that cultural heritage, that tourism isn't just Hollywood, it's also about what predated Hollywood and Disneyland and those things. So I am your partner with that. I know Mr. Ludlow, who chairs the committee that looks at tourism and conventions, is interested in that as well, so let me know how we can be helpful on that end, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. That is the final speaker, so we now have these three commission appointments before us. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
You are confirmed, and would let us say thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next item? Next item. Madam President, item number 14 is a confirmation of Ms. Joy Atkinson to the Planning Commission. Communication from the Chair of Plumb is before the council, and public hearing has not been held. Let us invite Ms. Atkinson forward as soon as the table clears. We do have a communication on this from Mr. Reyes. All right, we do have a communication on this from Mr. Reyes, who's the Chair of Plum, and we have a request to speak by Ms. Perry. As soon as Ms. Perry gets back to her desk. Ms. Perry, did you want to speak on this commission appointment as well?
I just wanted to say that Ms. Atkinson is a member of Law PAC, headed by Celestine Palmer. They were just here a few weeks ago, and I just wanted to speak on her behalf because she's been so involved in the community, but I've been most impressed with the activities of Law PAC, and I think she's representative of that quality of commitment and interest in civic participation. So I'm sure we'll have a unanimous vote today, but I just wanted to highlight that part of her background. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that affirmation, we have this matter now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson. You're confirmed. Thank you for your service.
Item number 10 is confirmation to the LA Housing Department, the General Manager, and also the salary recommendation by the EERC.
All right, if we may ask the new General Manager to come forward. Is there anyone who's... Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and welcome, Ms. Marquez, to full council. We are honored to have you here. Colleagues, Mercedes Marquez came to our Housing Community and Economic Development Committee, but I think many of us knew her long before that, and want to praise the mayor for his wisdom in nominating Ms. Marquez, who has a background that speaks for itself. I won't go into the biography because I think it's before all of us and most of us know about her if we don't know her personally. I wanted to say in committee just to, that of course she passed unanimously and on an oral vote in which we each were able to affirm our support of this nomination. But I think the buzz, which she probably didn't hear, but after that hearing, everybody talking to each other, city staff, other council members, were blown away by the strength of the answers, unusual even for a General Manager nomination, to be able to speak so eloquently and already with a lot of vision about where our housing policy needs to go in this city. I think some of the highlights of that included how we can do better with our private partnerships, and Ms. Marquez comes out of private development right now, though she's been on the public policy side and certainly knows the nonprofit side of housing as well. But now that we have made a commitment in terms of nonprofit housing and affordable housing through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which we have done, the next steps that she outlined that we have to take in terms of the private sector in unleashing the market forces to be able to help address what continues to be a crisis here. I want to give my strongest support that I can possibly give today. Ms. Marquez is not only a local leader but a national leader. We are lucky to have her. I want to thank her for the sacrifices in putting herself forward. It is not an easy job which she is entering into, and I know that the good people at the Housing Department will be able to work very well with her and that she will truly be able to lay out that vision quickly and at a time when funding is very difficult, be able to use all the resources that we have to address what is now, in a recent poll that I just saw, colleagues, after traffic, the price of housing was number two in the city, above crime, above education, above taxes, many of the things that we think about. This has now become the number-two issue in this city. And so congratulations once again. I will let your words speak for yourself, but I just wanted to say, colleagues, as Chair of the Housing Committee, that I offer my highest recommendation, as did all members of the committee, and we really are looking forward to getting down to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Let me recognize Ms. Perry, Councilmember Perry. And let me also let the council members know that we have four cards that were submitted, all in support. The public hearing had already been held, so it would take a motion from the floor to open it for a moment.
Thank you very much. Ms. Marquez, I wanted to rise, not only for myself but for Councilwoman Wendy Gruehl, who's not here today. She's on city business outside of the city, but she has called several times to emphasize the high regard that she has for you and is quite excited about your appointment. And I think the fact that there are community members already here in support of your nomination is a testament, as she tells me, to your ability to understand community needs and to translate that understanding into action. You have a significant history in providing a level of service and, as for me, representing an area such as Skid Row and parts of South Los Angeles. I'm looking forward to someone who has that viewpoint already in the provision of housing and delivery of services at the city level. So I rise in support of that as well, and hopefully I say congratulations to you in just a minute.
Thank you. Councilmember Villarosa.
Yes, Mr. and Madam President, members. I dare say that in the short time that I've been here on the council, I've not seen as qualified a candidate for General Manager of a major department than the one that Mayor Hahn is making here. As many of you know, Ms. Marquez was a Senior Counsel to the Secretary of HUD. She was the Deputy General Counsel for Civil Rights and the Fair Housing Department. She holds a Master's in Law and a J.D. from Georgetown and a B.A. from SC. But more importantly, she's got a long experience working in housing and fair housing and the affordable housing community. She was a Senior Partner with McCarran, McCormick, Barron, and Salazar. And I can tell you that just a few short weeks ago, we opened up El Pueblo de Sol, which I believe is one of the finest affordable housing projects anywhere in the nation. And Mercedes was a big part of that opening and a big part of bringing that from an idea to a reality. So I look forward to working with you on the council and in the city of Los Angeles to replicate that kind of housing project here and to address the housing shortage need that Councilmember Garcetti spoke of. One of the biggest challenges that we face is the challenge that city workers, county workers, firefighters, police officers can't buy a home in the city of Los Angeles on the wages that they make. And doing something about that is the challenge for us as Angelenos, and I look forward to working with Mercedes to meet that challenge head-on. So congratulations, and we're excited about this new appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Villarosa. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. I just have one question, Ms. Marquez, or is it Mercedes Marquez?
Mercedes Marquez.
Mercedes Marquez. Just one question, and your reputation certainly eludes to what I think your answer's going to be. Are you ready to be the kind of leader that is no-nonsense, gets through the process to the organizations that are going to be performing housing projects in this city in a way that's fair and equitable and forward-thinking and progressive?
I would say that most people would tell you that I'm a serious person. I think they would also say that the issue of equity in the city is one that is a burden that we carry. If we don't begin to accept that the housing at this point is inequitably distributed, we are missing not only huge opportunities but creating great problems for ourselves. And having said that, that does mean that we have to look at housing in every way possible. We can't leave money on the table. We can't leave neighborhoods without any help. We have to understand what works best. Not all strategies work. Every council manic district and neighborhoods within those districts are different with different needs, different makeups, renters to homeownership and opportunities. And so my hope is that we're going to hit the ground running and take a good look at the types of partnerships that need to be developed because they are unevenly developed now within the city limits. And so we have to take a look at spreading that out, but doing it in a way that is strategic. We can't waste time or money as we begin to look at that. So that would be my response.
Well, I'm excited about your appointment, and I support it wholeheartedly, and I look forward to the opportunity to analyze personally who's keeping up with who here as far as pushing the envelope, whether it's going to be Chairman Garcetti or yourself. But either way, I'm excited because I think we're going to be moving forward, and your qualifications and your reputation and your commitment is tremendous, and I'm excited about your leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I know in EERC, we discussed your qualifications, reviewed them, and you come with great credentials for this very challenging task. We talk about affordable housing, and if we look at the city of Los Angeles, affordable is a wide spectrum. And if I look at the San Fernando Valley, the median price $413,000, which is out of the cost range of many of our city workers. When we look at housing, we look at a housing stock, when we turn everything into apartments, we turn everything into condos versus that American dream of a single-family residence with a yard, little dog walking around, and the kids can play in the yard. Somehow the balance, and I think we've lost focus of the balance, where we want to have affordable housing, we don't want to have everything apartments, we want to give people that opportunity for the American dream. And then the other components that I know are sometimes missing, the transportation needs. When we tear down a single-family residence and put up a 15-unit apartment or a 30-unit apartment or a 400-unit apartment, and the transportation needs aren't addressed, I know the housing job balance, we want to make work for everyone. There are other components that we really need to look at, and I support the Housing Trust Fund, I support all the work that Councilmember Garcetti has done with the committee to really make the changes. And when I drive through Hollywood, I see we have retail on the bottom and residential on the top, as they have in Pasadena. But that American dream that people want to have a single-family residence, it seems to be vanishing more and more as we keep on trying to have housing stock to accommodate the needs of everyone. So I just want to welcome you to the city. I'm sure you'll be confirmed. I know we had unanimous support in the EERC when we discussed your qualifications and credentials, but somehow those other components, we talk about the failing infrastructure, and we're trying to build 160-some schools, where do we place them? So when we talk about housing, we want to make sure that we include those other components, the transportation needs, the jobs, the other infrastructure that goes along with it. So it's not just a house or an apartment with nothing else as a component. So I welcome you to the city family and just remind you of those other components that really aren't your main responsibility, but they all link together in that chain of quality for the city of Los Angeles. Again, welcome to the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations. Thank you for your soon-to-be service. In this climate that we're going into, I just want to ask, because you're the most recent General Manager at this table, with all the hiring freeze, and you may or may not have a chance to give an analysis, how are you going to be able to manage with the situation with the staff in the coming months and maybe years with that? What creative ideas do you have?
Well, I'll tell you, the first idea is, I don't know how creative it is, but it's certainly old-fashioned, and it's getting a sense of where we are. I need a baseline so that I can understand what is before us, what our potential is. My sense is, I worked at HUD at a time when certainly HUD had a horrible reputation. And we went through some reform with the same numbers, actually lowered the number of employees, some restructuring, taking a look at what works, doing more of those good things, and actually letting go of things that perhaps we shouldn't be doing anymore, are the ways that we begin to take a look at being successful with the resources that we have. So it's just some, I think, good old-fashioned horse sense about how do you squeeze that last nickel out? And also, how do you support your employees so that they understand the enormous contribution that they make and are going to make to this city? One thing that is important to me is that we need to be proud in the Department of Housing of what we do. And we're going to focus a lot on what we do, on mission, why it's important, what is already achieved, and more importantly, that we are not alone. What the councilman said, we cannot, housing is one part of life, but if we don't work with the Transportation Department and with the Community Development Department and with the CRA, we will only be marginally successful because we will miss all of the opportunities for leverage that are being presented to us.
That's so true. One other thing I just want to ask you, you talk about the prices going up, it's for all people, not just the people who work for the city. The housing costs are tremendous for anybody on that, and people make choices where they live. I wish all employees would live in Los Angeles, and I'm proud you live in Los Angeles, because I think that you have a greater feel, because when you're stuck on Eagle Rock Boulevard at a red light, you'll be saying, "Well, we've got to fix the traffic here." Or when you come across San Fernando Road or Las Vegas or wherever you're going down Normandy, you'll get an idea. But the question I want to ask you, what kind of relationship do you envision developing with the real estate community, the people who sell houses?
Well, actually, we have to work hard on that relationship. One of the issues that we face that we can't do much about unless we're involved is the price of land, the scarcity of land. We're going to have to develop a strong relationship with real estate folks, not only where they want to build, but how they want to build, the densities. What I am concerned about is that as people do chase the American dream, because of the land costs, we may not be able to afford to build in the same way we do now. That doesn't mean that we condoize, but it does mean that we take a more proactive approach to siting. And that does require an intimate knowledge of the real estate markets because those change throughout the city. And so my sense is a much greater partnership with the private sector. If we're going to stimulate that development, we have to understand what it is they need, what frightens them away, and what it is that in an equitable way would bring them to make the appropriate level of investment and make sure above all else that we're getting value as a city for that investment. I don't want giveaways, I want to get as much as we can for the city in a way that is fair to everyone.
Right. And in closing, Mr. President, I have a district that has a lot of old neighborhoods, and people love their old neighborhoods, they love their old houses, they're restoring them, there's a rebirth of these old neighborhoods, including long-established neighborhoods. And that's going to be one of the challenges because we do need to build some density where there's transit, where there's the subway, where there's the investment there. But we want to try to keep and restore, I've got a lot of HPOZs in my district, Historic Preservation Overlay Zones, to preserve those areas because there's a value to those. So I hope it's that balance that there, and I will, not just the real estate, we're talking about land, but also those who sell, the realtors who sell, that communication necessary. Because I think there's a lot of great days in your life, but one of the greatest days, other than your own birth to this world, other than the marriage or partnership that you may have with someone of a love of a life, other than the child that you may have, is when you buy a house, when you buy a house. Those things kind of in that order, maybe graduate from college would be a pretty good thing to throw in there, too, or complete service in the military or some other things like this.
Thank you.
But when you buy a house, hold on, I'm not done yet, Mr. Padilla. When you buy a house, it's so important, and in the CRA area of North Hollywood, we're trying to have homeownership, so that relationship to other departments is real important. I want to thank you. I've been extremely impressed with your concepts and ideas, and I look forward to working with you, and I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mr. Villarosa.
I understand that there's an organization here, Acorn, who has some baskets to distribute to us, and I'd like to allow them to do that.
Gift baskets.
If they need staff help, I'm sure some of our colleagues can step forward here.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to do this. My name is Elena Pop, and I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles Inclusionary Zoning Coalition to, several coalition members are present, and we'd like to present these baskets to the council members and to ask that as you give thanks for the homes that you all live in, that you think about those members of our community that don't have a home in which to live, and that if you have not signed on to the principles that the coalition is putting forward, that you do so. And the other coalition members will come forward, and I understand I'm to hand the baskets to the officer.
Hi, my name is Sara Lee Herrera, and I'm from Coalition LA.
My name is Bridgette Gonzalez, and I'm with the Eviction Defense Network.
I'm Nancy Halpern-Ibrahim with Esperanza Community Housing Corporation and the Steering Committee for the Los Angeles Healthy Homes Collaborative.
Maria Royo from Inquilinos Sonidos.
Maria Royo from Inquilinos Unidos, I'm a tenant organizer.
Hi, I'm Jesus Rodriguez, Staff Attorney with the Inter-City Law Center.
Roberto Bustillo with the Coalition for Economic Survival, a member of the Healthy Homes Collaborative.
Marlene Garza from the Housing Rights Center.
Julia Garcia, I represent Oportunidad.
Hi, my name is Alivon Her, call me Bonbon, and I am, of course, with Acorn. Yes, good to see you, darling.
It's a beautiful day in L.A. Enrique Aranda, Old Towner's Housing Development Corporation and the Healthy Homes Collaborative.
Linda Kite, Coordinator for the Healthy Homes Collaborative.
Jose Garcia, Executive Director for Inquilinos Unidos, Healthy Homes Collaborative.
Chancela Al Mansour with Neighborhood Legal Services of Los Angeles County, and I congratulate this council for making such a wise decision.
Elena Pop, I'm back to remind you to read the report that's included in the basket and to let you know that each of the baskets is substantially worth, is worth substantially less than $50, so you don't need to worry.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number eight was called special by Councilmember Parks, and there was also a recommendation to take item number 50 with item number eight.
Okay, Mr. Parks. And without objection, we'll consider items eight and 52 concurrently.
I think Ms. Perry asked for, item, we just asked 52 to be connected to it.
Okay, Ms. Perry.
Thank you. On item eight, I'd like to ask some questions, and I don't know whether it's appropriate to do it in an open session or closed session, and...
Well, let's ask away and see what our CLA and city attorney have to say.
Mr. Deaton, if you could just outline the basic proposal, the city's response, and the process that has been undertaken to achieve these recommendations today?
Well, let me start by, this was, this decision was started by really two factors. One is the Los Angeles Police Department's desire to consolidate their downtown personnel into one area, that we have several lease quarters, et cetera. And secondly, the pestering of people like Mr. Zine of trying to consolidate as much as we can the leases. And through the desires of the police department and the pestering, we have come to this point, gone through a process. Mr. Miller will outline the process we went through.
Okay, the city and its consultants identified 25 buildings in the downtown area that passed the minimum size requirements. Essentially, that was the only requirement, is are they in downtown, and is the size appropriate? We then went through and narrowed those down to three likely candidates that warranted further investigation. We then asked for proposals from all three of those buildings with a lot of detail, including price, you know, best and final offer, the conditions of the building, parking availability, you know, status of occupancy and leases, all of those issues. We then narrowed it down to two finalists that we negotiated with and met with, and the recommendation before you is a result of that. Now, in broad terms, this is in the best financial interests of the city for a variety of reasons, which I want to get into detail on in at least an open session. But that essentially was the process.
We believe, we believe that the proposal before you is operationally the best, financially the best, and for the police department and the city, and also, long-term, provides, once we have a certain investment at the beginning in the police department, once we complete a new Parker Center, we'll be consolidating almost all of our downtown leases into this facility, and we'll have substantial savings in the magnitude of $8 million a year from leases over time. So financially, operationally, in another every, most every fashion we can come to, this is the best conclusion, and we strongly recommend proceeding.
I wanted to ask a question about the nature of the improvements and the amounts that need to be expended for that.
The purchase price is $50 million. The, we're estimating tenant improvements to be an additional $30 million. Those figures were used in projections of the overall savings that Ron mentioned were a net of $8 million a year. I will add at this juncture, actually, while I'm thinking about it, the committee report should reflect a total amount of $95 million, a gross amount on the bonds that was discussed in committee, but the committee report doesn't reflect that. So the resolution needs to authorize a total of $95 million, 80 million is spent on hard costs.
And with respect to the $30 million needed for improvements, can you just sort of generally break it down so that people can have some understanding of what that means categorically?
That would be communications systems, specifically for PD, which is very complicated, furniture, equipment, you know, carpeting, basically the build-outs that are going to be required to move people in.
And most of this will be able to be used when we move the police department out. For example, the communication system will be such that anybody we move in there will be able to make minor modifications and be able to use the same communication system. We think much of, it'll be kind of an open, we won't be doing customized offices, it'll be more of an open office plan, et cetera. So we anticipate relatively minor changes when we shift from, when the police department leaves and new departments come in.
And then strategically, if this is to be an acquisition, and that is a temporary move for the police department over the course of projected how many years?
We anticipate that if we make the decision on Parker Center in the first, let's say in January, which would be my expectation, that roughly four and a half years later, we will be in Parker Center. It takes about, interestingly enough, about a couple of years in design and a couple of years in construction, and six months fudge factor.
And then if this acquisition takes place, and what's the plan to backfill the space once it is vacated?
We would be moving people from existing leases in downtown to the new facility, to the purchased facility at Broadway.
Are you talking about people on Spring Street, or what are you talking about?
Primarily. And what would that, moving those people is where we get the $8 million savings. And that really gets to the heart of what, as I indicated before, the second part of this, the Mr., when, I think Mr. Zine and others have introduced motions for us to do this consolidation and do a better job on our leasing. I think this is, does, is the lowest-cost approach that we can use, and also, because of the size of the building, many of the facilities, many of the departments will be together.
And I just think it's important, because you're talking about something that's very, very significant, to contrast how closely each proposal, what was the next closest proposal, and...
Well, that being too specific, we believe that this was a, provided for more parking, provided for roughly the same amount of space, if not a little more, a bigger...
Quite a bit more, actually.
Quite a bit more, and a bigger, the police department liked the size of the, each floor, it allowed more flexibility for office space design, and for a cheaper price. We got, we got all the benefits I'm talking about, and at a significantly lower price. There are other complications with some of the other proposals, the other two proposals that weren't in this one, so financial, operational, et cetera.
And I'm not sure, I'm assuming that that's the complications that you allude to are things that should be discussed at an open session, or how should we...
I would not want to discuss all the complications in open session.
All right. That is something that I would like to discuss, if not today. We can continue the matter until, I guess, next Tuesday. We're in session tomorrow, though, aren't we? Yeah, so...
We could, we're prepared, I mean, we could do executive session today.
I think, I think we do need to at least have that discussion, depending...
Hold that, then, we have other executive session items, we can do it, dispense with later days, so let's just move this to the end.
If that's appropriate in terms of the notice, I don't know.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, yes, that's fine.
At the time, we just have to indicate the addresses of the properties that we're going to discuss and the nature of the discussion, as I recall.
Okay. I do have Mr. Parks, Mr. Garcetti, and Mr. Zine. You all agree to wait to the closed session consideration of this item? Or do you wish to speak now? Mr. Parks passes, Mr. Garcetti?
Yeah. I was going to say, I'll wait until executive session.
That's right. Mr. Garcetti?
My stuff, I think, is open session information, so I think I should do it in open session. But Mr. Deaton had said in committee about the Community Development Department and the possibility of funding some of the financing on the loan, is that correct, out of the block grant? Could you give me a little more detail? Because one of the things I just want to know about that is if the cost is less to the Community Development Department being here than where they are today, whether we're looking at still billing them full price, in essence subsidizing the police department through block grant money, or whether we're going to be clear that those savings would be passed on to make sure that those block grant dollars can go where they're intended, which is to combat poverty?
The CDD is currently paying about $2.5 million a year to lease space. The proposal would be that they pay for their proportionate share of the new building, which would be about $1,002,000 a year. So they should net an additional approximately $1,003,000 a year that they could use for programs.
That's how I thought I'd understood, but I just want to make sure, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, can be for open session, Mr. Deaton. I like that term pestering. Determination pestering is probably appropriate, as much as we've talked about that.
If the shoe fits, wear it, I guess.
It does. Both of them will fit, thank you. The parking, sufficient parking to accommodate the growing needs, once the police department relocates, whatever departments are in there, there'll be sufficient parking for those vehicles.
Actually, the parking requirements of the police department exceed what we believe the eventual needs of the other departments, so, and there is available, that was a crucial issue, and the decision for this particular building is the availability of 1,700 parking spaces, and it provides enough parking for the police department. And long-term, we'll probably have more parking than we need, and so we'll have to deal with that issue of what we do with the additional parking at that point. But, but that's just, will be a financial gain to the city at that point in time. And then the 419, the 433, and the other locations that LAPD has personnel assigned, the plan is they will all be consolidated. They'll all be, with rare exceptions, there's a few units in the Civic Center that will not be transferred to this building, but for the most part, I'd say 95% of all the police departments and the, police department employees in the Civic Center will be located here. Sands, we will continue to operate the jail, and we'll continue to operate property out of the existing Parker Center until we've built a new jail, which is going on Temple and Los Angeles Street. We'll begin, that'll take about four years as well. So when we complete the jail, then we'll demolish the existing parking center and the jail, and that won't be until about four years from now. And I know one of the concerns of people will say that the state is going to float $15 billion, or anticipate $15 billion in bonds, and there's a financial crisis hitting other cities, including Los Angeles. The justification on the expenditure that we will do to pay for this, and the bond measure that pays for the new Parker Center, we are anticipating reduced leases, which will then offset the costs of the relocation and the permanency of city departments at city property, and the leases, I recall somewhere up to $50 million in lease costs we were paying a year, that will then be wiped free. Once we move the police department and the new Parker Center, we'll be saving $8 million a year on leases.
Okay, well, the report that came in of all the leases from all the departments that we were paying was somewhere in the tune of $50 million. So how do we increase the city use of city-owned property and reduce the lease payments around the area? Not only central part of Los Angeles, the Civic Center, but there were other leases that accumulated, accounted for like $50 million a year. And we're trying to own the property and then reduce those lease payments, and $8 million is significant, but eight compared to 50, there's a big gap there. How do we do more own property? For example, the police stations that we own the property, we're not leasing property, the libraries, how do we reduce those lease costs? That was one of the main concerns I had, to own the property and reduce those lease costs. Further reduction?
I need to take, I'll come back to you on that, but we're reducing in the Civic Center $8 million a year, and for the most part, there'd be very little that we will leasing in the Civic Center. They'll, we'll have Wreckin' Parks and housing and a few others that won't be in this building when it's over and done with, but for the most part, we will be eliminating most of the leases in the Civic Center with this action.
Okay, 95%.
When this...
Let me be clear, the $8 million is net. Now, we're getting rid of about $15 million a year in leases. So essentially, a third of what you're talking about will be taken care of just in this action alone. The net is because then we have to pay debt service on the billing that we're buying. So the net savings is $8 million. We're getting rid of $15 million in leases.
Okay. Have you been down to 419, 433 lately?
Not lately.
The elevators aren't working, the air conditioner's not working, and the employees are really in, what we call, oh, should probably say in tolerable condition. So the sooner we get some of those, I know Parker Center is in need of moving the administrative operations out, but some of the field operations, the tactical operations, they're in some really sore conditions in some of those facilities.
I think that they will be very pleased, I think they'll be very pleased to be moving into the new facility.
Okay, thank you.
We'll look at priorities, I have no problem with it being first.
For the move, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Is this building occupied currently?
There's currently one tenant in the building, the Federal General Services Administration.
Okay, so my next question is, when you say one tenant, it's totally occupied, 50% occupied, 20% occupied?
No, it's about 90% vacant. They have about 40,000 square feet of the, almost 500,000 square feet.
So the converse of 90% vacant means it's only 10% occupied?
10% occupied, yeah.
Okay, because my question was occupancy, not vacancy. Okay, my next question is, apparently, I note on this comment, a report from the CLA, is that the $50,700,000, this is below the city's appraisal. So we have a city appraisal with a building that's 10% occupied that's valued over $50 million?
Yes.
And that appraisal was based on its current condition, or based on the potential after the $30 million in TI improvements? Or 10 million, or 20, or whatever improvements that apparently the city's going to embark on in this transaction?
It would be based on the income that the building would generate, were it occupied.
Are there other manners in which you could appraise a property besides the one that you just described, when it comes to value, purchase value?
You can do the market value, in other words, what somebody will pay for it. You can do income, which for the most part, when you're talking about investment property, that's the underlying issue, and those are the two basic methods of appraisal. And what the, and it has to be a combination of, and then, excuse me, one third one is replacement value. In other words, how much would it cost you to replace the building? In this instance, replacing that building would cost substantially more than the $50, $50 million, and the market value slash return on investment is interrelated. Sometimes it is the, market value may be more or less than what the incurrent return on investment, because somebody is speculating that the, that the long-term need for office space in a particular area is going up or going down. And so there's, given, obviously, if you did a pro forma on this particular piece of property, given its current ten, current vacancy, it would not pencil out, but the anticipation would be, and this was the case in two of the, in two of the three of the, two out of three of the properties we looked at, they were both more than 50% vacant, or less than 50% occupied, and... 50% occupied, and, and both appraisals were based on what anticipation of people being moved in. And the other piece of property that we looked at, it was fully occupied, but fully occupied by us, the city, so.
Okay, so that leads to my next question. According to us as a potential buyer of this property, who are we competing with to purchase this property? Likely? Who has the ability to fill in 490,000 square feet of office space in this climate, as in this economy of Los Angeles?
I haven't done a survey of that. I can just tell you that in the last two to three years, the activity and the prices of downtown real estate are on the rise, and the occupancy is going up. I doubt that there's very few people that could, just as we are doing, fill it as quickly as you could fix it.
Or even get to the 300,000 square foot mark, et cetera. There's very few players, right?
That can do, that are in our situation.
Now, what kind, what kind of advantages would you suppose that that would give us as a potential buyer of a building that has 10% occupancy? Obviously, whoever owns it right now has some stranded costs or something to that effect, that they would be eager to find a tenant such as the city of Los Angeles?
I think that, that their price reflected that, one. Actually, again, in two of the buildings that we looked at, this being one, both buildings had just been recently purchased for more than people would have probably anticipated they were worth three or four years ago, when maybe we should have made this endeavor at that point. But at some point, the, both, in both cases, I believe the purchase by the individuals that currently own the buildings were made on the basis of that they felt they could fill them, and they could get a return on their investment, notwithstanding whether we bought the building or not.
So this building hasn't recently changed ownership?
Both buildings, the, two of the three buildings, both have recently changed hands.
And this one is one of those two?
This is one of the two.
Okay. How long ago did this change hands, and at what price?
The sale was in the spring, but what happened is the buyer bought the entire complex. There are three buildings in the complex. My understanding is that the entire complex sold for something in the order of $110 million. But it was a private sale, so we don't, we don't know how it was allocated between the three buildings.
But we know the gross amount, because that's public record.
Correct.
Okay? And of that, the complex, this represents one-third, it represents half, it represents, what does it represent? This 490,000 square feet and 1,700 parking spaces?
I believe it's about 40% of the whole complex, but I'd have to confirm how big the other buildings are.
Okay. Now, I have a question regarding, how long has this idea of purchasing one massive building and filling it with various departments, how long has that been an objective of the city of Los Angeles? Either formally or otherwise?
Well, we were given instructions...
Well, basically, back in February of this year and in April, we've been talking about it for some time, the concept of buying a building rather than spending money on leases. But this specifically, we were given instruction in April to negotiate a purchase.
You were given instructions by who?
By the city council.
By the city council?
Right.
That was an informal instruction, or a formal instruction by one of the committees?
Formal instruction by the city council. The entire city council.
Okay. So this actually represents an opportunity to satisfy that need, and also the temporary need for the police department being housed there?
It was more, we were given the instruction to go look for a temporary Parker Center, and our view was that financially, it did not make sense unless we were able to consolidate the leases, that to buy the building and then sell it afterwards would put us in kind of a speculative situation. But if you look at the economics of transferring the people that are currently in lease quarters at the conclusion of the use of the building by the police department, then we, the $8 million a year that we're discussing, and basically, personally, our office had been less than enthusiastic, quite frankly, about a temporary Parker Center, until such time as we then coupled it with the, the other approach, and tried to solve two problems simultaneously.
Last question.
Okay.
Now, when it comes to the potential tenant improvements, the tenant improvements to the police department portion of usage, those improvements, by and large, are transferable to another department as they replace the LAPD when they move out into their new facility?
Yes, especially if we watch carefully. In other words, we're going to resist customized solutions to the police department's problems in this building, in order to make sure that it has more applicability to a future department. We're going to try to make it as standard as we possibly can.
So you're...
There'll be some exceptions, but not...
You're going to try to arrive at some kind of hybrid of acceptable to the police department's uses, but usable once they move out?
Exactly. And some of it, like telecommunications, et cetera, is not a, not a big problem at all. In fact, the police department's telecommunication requirements will exceed, for the most part, anything that we would put in there later.
Mr. Cardenas, I'm going to ask you to press your button again. We have Mr. Labange waiting to speak.
Okay. Has he ever gone over? No, it's okay, I'll wait.
Mr. Labange?
I'll give my time. Thank you very much. I learned something. Someone told me I should do what Mr. Holden used to do, push the button again, sit down, push the button again, and you can speak again. That's the trick there. But anyway, Mr. Deaton, what we have before us is a condition over Parker Center that's a poor place to work in. Our productivity is not as good, because it's an older building, and it doesn't meet today's modern standards. Correct?
If you don't go any further, I'll agree with you.
Okay. So the Municipal Facilities Committee got together under the direction of this council some months ago to find a site suitable for what may be a long-term police administration building as a replacement, because the foreseeable future, there's no funding for a new building, correct?
Well, we have actually been given instructions on the new building as well, and we're actively involved in a master plan in the existing site and the site of First Alameda, but...
But this investment would probably be an investment that would have an operation of a police administration building for at least 10 years or more?
Four.
Excuse me?
Four to five.
You think four to five?
Yes, I do.
You think four to five?
We're going to, we're going to move the police department into a new Parker Center in four to five years, and then we're going to move people that we currently have leased in lease quarters into this building. That's how we save our $8 million, and the only way this whole thing makes sense is this is in order to save that lease money, in order to pay for the debt service on this, this piece of property.
I support buying this property, because I think it's important for the long term, but four to five, I'm going to hold you wherever you are in the world, Ron. Four to five.
You may have to come looking.
So they moved from Parker Center over to this building on Hill Street, correct? Is it Hill and 11th? Hill and 12th?
Broadway.
The both of Hill?
The Broadway Building's on Broadway.
Well, but the backside's on Hill Street. From Main Street, the Broadway, up to Hill, to Olive, when it'd be Grand Hope to pick a flower and figure a row. Okay, now, so they do that. Now, after four to five years, there's a new police administration Parker Center, either back at its, near its original site, or wherever it is, located in the Civic Center. This building is then available for other facilities, the regional government, whatever it is. It's an investment. I think we, we also, members, I just think it's a great investment to do this. We missed some opportunities in past years where there were properties available, good properties available, to buy and to consolidate needed city facilities in those areas. I just wanted to stand to support this and recall it, and then to hold you on the four to five years. I like that. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? At this time, if not, then we will hold it on the desk as we do go into closed session for further discussion. Next item, please.
Item number 27 was called special inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
Item 27 now before us, and the council calls forward, there must be a second James K. Hahn in this town. James K. Hahn, followed by Mark Elzwick, Everett McGuire, Mario Michael Martini, and I'll call other speakers as we proceed. Is Mr. Hahn with us? Mr. Hahn? Mark Elzwick? If I can ask you to form a line behind the podium? Yes, sir. Mr. Elzwick will be followed by Everett McGuire, Mario Michael Martini, and John Greensberg? Go ahead.
Good morning, city council. My name is Mark Elzwick. I'm the executive director of the Palisades Malibu YMCA, and we have been working for quite some time at making a purchase of a piece of land on Sunset and Temescal, and working for a lot split. This piece of land that we are in the process of purchasing is very important to our YMCA. It provides about 20% of our revenue from sales of trees, pumpkins, and also another 20% from our day camp, of which 150 children take part each summer in our camp that we, that we offer for the community, of which also from there, we have the, we have people that grow up through the camp and become staff in the community. It's a very important piece for us to have this piece of property. We also have over 600 signatures in support from our community for us to have the purchase of this property that we need for our YMCA. I urge your support with this project that we're, that we're working towards, and we also have had, for this property, for many years, the option of purchasing this property when it was transferred from the Presbyterian Synod to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. Also, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy Executive Director, Joe Edmiston, is in support of this, and Councilwoman Ms. Zinkowski has copies of all of that, and as I'm sure all of you do as well. I urge you for your support with this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is James Kenneth Hahn. I'm older than the mayor, and I don't regret his use of my name. I'm a longtime member of the YMCA board, and I'd like to just mention a couple features of this particular site that are particular, and I think relevant. It's at the intersection of two major boulevards in Pacific Palisades, actually, the two major boulevards, Sunset Boulevard and Temescal Canyon Boulevard. This is a signalized intersection, also at the intersection is a high school, a five-story condominium project, a parking lot. Much of the day, it's hard to hold a conversation on this site because of the high level of traffic noise. The site is covered with approximately 16 feet of filled dirt. You may hear opposition speakers describe this as a pristine wilderness. It's not. I urge you to approve the lot split. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Everett McGuire. Mr. President, members of the council, I'm speaking in favor of the lots split, and I've lived in the Palisades for over 40 years. We raised our three children there, and since 1963, I've been active in four very positive organizations dedicated to helping families, individuals, and especially our youth. Of course, my first attention was to the Methodist Church, having transferred from Westwood to the Pacific Palisades. I served 10 years as the president of the governing board of the Palisades Methodist Church, and 25 years on the trustees, and currently president of the trustees. Next, my attention was directed to the Masons, which I have been a member of since 1961, and I served as master in 1992, and the last 10 years as the treasurer of the Palisades Masons. My attention was also directed to the American Legion, a strong community organization where I've been a member for 26 years. I served as commander in 19, 2001, and currently on this executive committee, and currently the judge advocate for the State of California Department of American Legion. And finally, the YMCA. I became a member of the YMCA board in 1970, served on the board for 26 years, during which time I became very familiar with the efforts of the YMCA to acquire a small partial property from the 140 acres that were then owned by the Presbyterian Synod. In 1976, we entered into an agreement with the Synod to buy a small portion of the property with an option to purchase the property. It was modified in 1985, and again in 1990 while I was chairman of the board. In 1994, a state in connection with acquiring the 140 acres then owned by the Presbyterian Synod also entered into an agreement taking, with the YMCA, to honor the option agreement that the Y had with the Synod. For the next three years or so, at the request of the Conservancy, the Y board met with various groups and individuals and the Conservancy, during which time the Conservancy came up with several requests, one of which was the state wanted to reserve the oil rights. And the Y says, no problem, we're in the people business, we're not in the oil business, so certainly the state can reserve the oil rights. The Conservancy came up, well, we don't want you to build for 10 years. The Y says, fine, we have no plans, we just want to continue our current use, Christmas trees, pumpkins, and day camp.
Sir, if I may ask you to conclude, please?
Okay. And then, we filed for a lot split in '98, and then Councilman Cindy said, meet with the groups again. We did that for two years, spent $25,000 in various studies, and I urge your support of splitting from the thousands of acres that the state now owns north of Sunset, this 3.9 acres for the Y's current use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mr. President and council members, good morning. My name is Dr. Mike Martini. I have been a pediatrician in Pacific Palisades for 42 years, now retired for eight years. As a charter and intenuous member of the YMCA in Pacific Palisades since 1964, I merely want to state that the purchase of the land under question with present covenants has been approved by the seller, Santa Monica Mountain Conservatory, by Councilwoman Ms. Jankowski, and most of the citizens of Pacific Palisades. After 25 years of haggling, it is time to close the deal. Actually, we should have a friendly partnership with Friends of Temescal Canyon in beautifying and maintaining the whole area formerly known as the Presbyterian Campgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, councilman. My name is John Gundershaw. I am a, serve on the YMCA board, a 29-year resident of the Pacific Palisades. Wife and I have raised two children. I am here to speak in favor of the YMCA being able to complete the purchase of the property in Temescal Canyon. This acquisition of the property goes back over 20 years with paid options. The YMCA has been a good neighbor. It has provided programs for the whole family, community, for children, youth, adults, and Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's John Goldsmith. I reside at 15417 Bester Boulevard. I live within 100 yards of the subject property. I'm also on the Y Board of Managers, and I've been involved in the Y for more than 10 years. I'm firmly in favor of this acquisition. It's right in my backyard, and it's the right use of this property. Thanks.
My name is Corwin Davis, and I've lived in the Palisades for 20 years, and we've had this lot application split, or the option to buy for almost 30 years, and we want to exercise it now. One of the things that's very important to us, as you've heard, is for the pumpkin patch and the Christmas tree lot, which we would continue to use for that purpose. Without those type of fundraisers, our YMCA would not exist. Also used are the properties day camp, which is very important in the summertime, and I support, you know, this effort for the lot application split, and I urge you to do as well. Thank you very much.
Good morning, council. My name is Daniel Slate. I'm a resident of Pacific Palisades. I live at 851 Toyoopa. I'm a member of the Board of Managers. I'm also the chief of the Sunset Nation of Indian Guides and Princesses, where a substantial amount of the activities of that organization occurs on the, on the land we're talking about. It's the Indian Guides and Princesses, ages five through eight years old, who help you buy your pumpkins and help you buy your Christmas trees at the season, and it's those same children who attend the day camp. We serve, I believe we have 350 children in the program this year, and a substantial amount of our, of our program occurs on this spot that we're talking about. It is very important, not just to dollars for the YMCA... It is very important, not just to dollars for the YMCA, but also for the programs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We also have Mark Elswick and Kevin McDonald waiting to speak. Mark spoke. Kevin McDonald?
Morning, Honorable Councilmembers. For the record, my name is Kevin McDonald. I'm an attorney from the law firm of Jeffreel, Mangles, Butler, and Marmarow, representing Friends of Temescal Canyon in their opposition to this application today. Let me make something clear right off the bat. Friends of Temescal Canyon is not against the YMCA. It is not against the Y's programs. It's not against the sale of Christmas trees or pumpkin sales, as long as they adhere to reasonable conditions. They're not trying to drive the Y off the property. What Friends of Temescal Canyon is trying to see is that the state and city planning and zoning and land use laws are properly adhered to. And I'm here today to address some of the questions that have been out there for the nearly six years that this application has been alive and have not yet been adequately addressed. And the number-one issue that I'd like to discuss real quickly is the reason why I've had no response to my questions as to how this application could go as long as it has gone. This was initiated in 1998. It took the Deputy Advisory Agency four and a half years after the environmental review was completed to hear the case. And when the city's laws clearly say that the Deputy Advisory Agency hearing and decision is to take place within 30 days after the application is complete, and I see nothing in the file to suggest that there was an agreement to extend these time limits, I'm interested to know how this application could still be alive based on the initial application and not have been expired at this point. And let me say, that's not a petty technicality, because there are good reasons why there should be reasonable time limits on this application. And this one is a great example, this particular case, because this time limit has led to what I believe are serious general plan inconsistencies and some zoning violations based on some of the changes that have taken place over time. In 1998, when this project was first initiated and the environmental review was conducted, the property was designated to be in the RE-40 zone. As we know now, and at the time of the Advisory Agency's decision, the zone is, the property is in the OS zone, open space zone. And the general plan calls for open space. It is also quite clear, it shows in no fewer than two places in the initial part of the municipal code addressing the open space zone, that the open space zone is reserved for publicly-owned land. And it was implemented to promote the general plan as well. So I would like some kind of response to the question as to how could the city approve a parcel map, coastal development permit, and variances on a property zoned OS, knowing it should be reserved for publicly-owned land, and knowing that the express purpose of the parcel map is to make the property available for private ownership? That is, the fact that this property would wind up in private hands is a direct contravention to the purposes of the general plan and the zoning for open space. That has not been adequately addressed. That inconsistency leads to some serious sequel violations. And at the Plumb Hearing, I pointed out that sequel violations stem from classic project splitting and from the inadequacy of the overly narrow project description. Staff's response to my sequel arguments was that this project could have been found to be categorically exempt. But that is incorrect. There's a Category 15 exemption for minor land divisions that allows for exemptions, but only if the project does not require variances and is consistent with the general plan and the zoning, and is on land with an average slope of less than 20%. We do have variances associated with this project.
If I can ask you to conclude, please.
I will wrap this up as quickly as I can. We do have inconsistencies with the zoning and the planning for the reasons I stated. And this project involves nearly 58 acres of land in the Santa Monica Mountains. So it's hard to believe that the average slope would be less than 20%. So clearly, sequel applies here, and clearly, the city is obligated to uphold the rules of the state. Now, these flaws can be remedied. The Friends of Temescal Canyon would like very much to avoid court intervention, and I think the city can adequately remedy this. One, by applying enforceable conditions that limit the project to that which was described in the project description and for which the environmental review was conducted, namely, that there be no construction on the property. Or the city should ask that the project description be properly described, describing the whole of the project, including the imminent zone change, plan amendment, which is not a part of this action, and the construction of future facilities, and recirculate the environmental review. Now, the Y has said that they've made a good-faith effort to comply with some no-build agreements. They've recorded what they are calling a covenant, but I can tell you, it's a unilateral declaration that is not enforceable. If indeed, the Y is sincere about preserving the open space and leaving the property open, there's absolutely no reason why the city, as a part of its action, could not condition that in an enforceable fashion as it does in the normal course of business.
Thank you.
The city has repeatedly said that it cannot do that without an explanation as to why. And it's hard for me to imagine why it could not, realizing that they have other, even more restrictive, conditions associated with this project, such as directing the Y as to who they may sell this property to in the event that they divest themselves.
Thank you, I'm going to ask you to conclude at this time. I know you also submitted a letter which has been distributed to councilmembers.
Yes, I just want to make sure that all members did receive that and lays out some of these arguments. And I urge the council to take these issues to heart and deny the application and uphold this appeal.
Does conclude for item 27. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Mr. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm happy to answer some of Mr. McDonald's questions. But first, let me put this in context. This is a parcel map that is being requested essentially by two parties. One, the State of California in the name of the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy. The Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy, as it indicated, its staff recommended this, and the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy Board approved it unanimously. Then, the other party is the YMCA. The YMCA had had an option to buy this land, this 3.7 acres, before even the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy bought it. When the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy bought the entire property, the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy agreed with conditions to honor the option that the YMCA had previously had. Part of the time from the filing of this map in '98 to today, and why it's taken so long, is because my office did ask the YMCA, along with the Conservancy, to meet with the community and work out some of the issues that were still outstanding. Those conditions have been worked out and are part of the conditions of approval. They include the indication that this will only be used for the pumpkin patch, the Christmas tree lot, and the day camp. For each of those uses, there is specification as to lighting, specification as to the hours of operation, specifications as to no sound amplifications, specifications to say no gas-powered saws can be used to cut the Christmas trees so that there is not disturbance. There are a large number of conditions, including if the YMCA, for some reason, falls on hard times and chooses to sell this land, divest itself of this land, the first right of refusal goes back to the Santa Monica Conservancy, if not them, the city's Recreation and Parks Department, and if not them, then any other third party that would continue to operate as a nonprofit. Mr. McDonald is right. This land is zoned OS or open space because the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy has been the owner. As the parcel is being split, the new private owner of one small part of it, the YMCA, has not objected to the open space zoning. Mr. McDonald is aware that we can't impose open space on private land, open space zoning. But where private land operators willing to take the land with open space and all the same restrictions that does apply to government-owned open space, that is acceptable. That is what is occurring here. Beyond that, the community had some concerns that what will happen in the future? Is this really a ruse for future development? The city attorney said we could not require a covenant, say no build, for 10 years because that would be a taking of the land. But the city attorney said there would be no objection if the YMCA volunteered a private covenant to say that there will be no build on the land other than those three specified uses. That private covenant has been filed by the YMCA and is now part of the file as part of a voluntary commitment. Members, as I said, the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy approved this. The city's Advisory Agency approved it. The city's West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission approved it unanimously. The Planning and Land Use Management Committee approved it unanimously. I believe that all the issues have been addressed, are fine, are well taken care of, and this is a way that we will preserve for a good deal into the future, this open space land remaining as it has been providing uses to the community for many, many years. And I ask for an adoption of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee report, which denies both appeals and sustains the actions of all the previous agencies that looked at this and affirmed the parcel map.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Zinkowski. Other members wishing to be heard on the side. Other members wishing to be heard on the side. If not, then we'll proceed with the vote. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tap to vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 30 calls for the Councilmember Weiss, and there are cards from the public.
Mr. Weiss, did you wish to speak? Let's go directly to public comment on item number 30. The council calls for Flora Gil Kristalov, followed by Jay Greenstein and Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. Item number 30.
Good morning. I'm Flora Gil Kristalov. I'm with Veterans Park Conservancy, 11661 San Vicente Boulevard. Veterans Park is a nonprofit organization that's been in existence for about 15 years. And it's composed of both veterans and community leaders from not only Los Angeles, but beyond Los Angeles. I'm here, our president is Major General Win Robinson. He's not able to be here this morning, but I would like to introduce our Executive Director and Founder, Sue Young, and Nancy Friedman, a Board Director. We would just like to share with you that Veterans Park Conservancy has been involved in raising, as a nonprofit, has been raising money for the improvements around the National Cemetery and around the 400 acres of VA land for over 15 years. And in that process, we raised over $3 million. At this point, much of the acreage at the VA is considered excess land, and that has given the whole West Side community a great deal of concern because there are different pressures of different types of development, especially commercial development on these 400 acres. There was a master plan that was mandated by Congress about three years ago, and I was part of that master planning process, which unfortunately was severely flawed and had to be stopped because it called out for three century cities worth of commercial development. And today, we're here and very grateful that Councilman Weiss, Councilwoman Ms. Zinkowski, and Councilman Labonne have put forth this motion, which exactly states what a broad base of consensus has been asking for, which is a new master plan, the Land Use Advisory Committee not be approved, and also that there be cultural historic research surveys conducted. There are two historic districts on these 400 acres. They are national historic districts. So this is not a local issue. This goes beyond. And within those two national historic districts, there are 41 buildings that have been designated as National Register eligible. We are now working with the LA Conservancy and the National Trust. This is truly a multi-jurisdictional issue. It's federal, it's county unincorporated, it's state, and it's city. So at this point, we enjoy a broad base of support. Mayor Hahn himself has given us a letter that supports the same motion that you have before you, Congressman Waxman, the Senator Feinstein and Boxer also. So we really appreciate this motion and hope that you will pass it today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Greenstein?
Good morning. I should say, good afternoon. My name is Jay Greenstein. I'm here today representing State Assemblyman Paul Coretts. The Assembly represents most of the Brentwood community that surrounds the Veterans Administration land, along with a number of other neighboring communities. Thank you to Councilmembers Weiss, Ms. Zinkowski, and Labonne for bringing this item today to the council. Assemblymember Coretts has joined the council members along with Congressmember Waxman, Supervisor Yaroslavski, and other elected officials who've raised concerns about the process of the so-called Veterans Administration CARES Commission. I have a letter from the Assemblyman to the Veterans Administration Secretary Principally that I can share with the council if anybody would like to see. Some of you may know that the state Veterans Administration, that's the state Veterans Administration, has chosen the West LA Veterans Administration site for a state veterans home. The Assemblymember has written to the state Veterans Administration Director to make sure that the community is engaged in the decision in the use of this facility or the planning for this facility, and to ensure that this facility truly incorporates the wonderful grounds of the Veterans Administration land. Assemblymember Coretts believes that this is a use of this land that the community truly will support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hawkins, your final speaker.
The time correct?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Monitor this time.
My name is Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. And considering item number 30, I disagree with the selling of our Veterans Administration property with our healthcare net system is out of market and cost. And the little time that we have left on our new Medicare budget plan program, we cannot afford to fool a trick to people, or the public people as though this CARE Commission is about to enhance our community pharmacy paying costs, or that the medication is about to help us is about to help us, when those whom we are at war with is now only delivering weaker value medication, or medicine, that is not helping us to be healed, whether they are delivering it from the USA or overseas. We must be real with the people. I am very concerned concerning the leasing costs versus buying to own. I checked out the marketplace concerning if you lease a limousine, now if you buy a limousine, and if you lease for over nine months, or over 10 months, and now you cancel the debt, that you gain nothing. If you buy a limousine, now you are buying to own the limousine car. So I really am concerned concerning leasing when the property that they're trying to buy, whether leasing or buying.
We're straying from the subject matter before us.
Okay, talk about our Veterans Administration building.
Yes.
On property. If we're leasing or buying, is the building empty? Even the building right here on Spring Street? If they buy the building, and if it's, if it's apartment, or if it's vacancy, only four people living there, are we leasing or buying this property?
Let me thank you, thank you for your comments and complete public comment. It's time, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank my friend Ms. Kristoloff and Mr. Greenstein, thanks for, for coming today. Ms. Young, thank you. Thanks everybody who's been so involved in this issue for so long. It's really, it's a stu, it's a story about partnership, it's also a story about a lot of leadership. Cindy Misakowski, for years and years, has worked so hard on behalf of the preservation issue of the Veterans Park. Supervisor Zeb Yerslawski, who couldn't be with us today, has also stood up and made very clear to the VA what we believe should be done here in Los Angeles. Congressman Waxman, as well, both of our senators. And, and today, after this vote, the city of Los Angeles, as you said a few moments ago, Ms. Kristoloff, there is a real threat to our quality of life on the west side of Los Angeles, and the threat comes not from within here, but from 3,000 miles away. And if the Veterans Administration is allowed to proceed to plan and scope out development on this property without any controls, without any participation and input from the rest of us at the local level, you know, I really fear for the outcome, because that, that intersection there of the 405 freeway and Wilshire Boulevard has to be about the most prime piece of real estate on the planet. And it was set aside long ago for reason, that was for the veterans, and that's the only purpose that that property ought to be used for. And I'm just so pleased that you're all here today. We're going to continue, unfortunately, I think this is a fight that's just going to keep going on and on and on. We thought it had been over before, I'm hoping we get some good resolution out of this CARES process, but even if we do, we're all still going to have to stay just as vigilant in the future. I think that's one lesson we've learned, is that we have, we cannot keep our eyes off of the bureaucracy's aims when it comes to this project, or when it comes to this property. So, urge an eye vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Ms. Misakowski, she passes. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Before proceeding to the next item, Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I'm going to ask for reconsideration of item 30, which was on last Friday's agenda. This was the second part of the adult entertainment discussion and debate we had, where the council did vote 11 to nothing to adopt the substitute motion, the substitute ordinance that the city attorney had presented, and essentially this was presented as the compromise motion. Because it was only 11 votes, we weren't able to act on it, had to go over until the first week in December, so I'm asking for an eye vote for reconsideration today, and then I'll ask the city attorney to come forward with yet a substitute, hopefully we can adopt it today, and the matter be over and sent to the mayor. So, first, my motion is to ask for reconsideration of item 30 on last week's agenda.
Okay, members have a motion for reconsideration, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 30 from last Friday's agenda is now before us.
Thank you, and let me ask the city attorney to come forward, as we remember, as we adopted it, there were some technical amendments that still needed to be discussed, the city attorney said they would bring those forward later. City attorney has incorporated those, as well as some language issues that don't substantively change the ordinance, that make it clearer in enforcement. So I would like to move that we substitute the new ordinance that the city attorney has presented, and put in the file for today, and ask for an eye vote to adopt that, hopefully unanimously, so we can send it to the mayor.
Okay, and I see no further discussion on this item. Let's open the roll, open the ordinance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, with 12 votes, let's end this matter for the speakers, please. And thank Ms. Hawkins for her patience. Next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Council calls forward Mr. Leonard Wayne Rose Jr., followed by Ms. Tessa Maria Maxwell and Jamie Green.
Leonard Wayne Rose Jr., I'd like to talk about the earthquake is coming pretty soon till now or near the future, but I study survival as the big one, how to prepare for a major earthquake, and need to have an earthquake drill in businesses, homes, and schools, and counties. And I went to LA Board of Supervisors, made a speech last Tuesday, 258, and I talked about earthquake drill, that boss need to study by CPR, first aid at American Red Cross, and he could study these books, American Red Cross, Public Library, read up book books about learning more emergency search safety in adult school, and college could train you to do that, and you need to get off a gas bill, water bill, and have plenty of food, water bottle, and ready a radio battery, and liquid gas generator motor by a hour store, like, they cost us $6,000 a hour store, it gets generated there, and Matthew 24, verse 1 to 51, and Luke 21, 138, talk about dangerous time, this is in the Bible, wars, famine, earthquake, persecution, and about the end time, and it's come close to the end time with how we prepare for it, and this is a copy, in the back page, and how awareness about safety of earthquake, when we have 8.9 point earthquake, and they got movie, earthquake movie, AMC, American Movie Classic TV dot com, and you could watch the movie Earthquake, thank you very much.
Ms. Maria, Tessa Maria Maxwell?
Good afternoon, Mr. President and council members. My name is Tessa Maria Maxwell, and I serve as an advisor to President Bush on community initiative and development, and I'm here to give you an update on the Walter Parquet Arts Recreation Project. I've been away for some time due to lack of transportation, when the buses were down, and being a single parent dealing with a 13-year-old, we had to have a boot camp experience, so that's where I've been. I now have a case manager to build in safety, because my goal for the project is to make sure that the city has very little to do, since they have said that they're going to sponsor the project, so I'm making sure that the work is done, so by the time it reaches Mayor Hahn's desk, all he has to do, when the time comes, is come up with the money, and I'm also working on ways to do that, through the Compassion Act, legislation, through the Compassion Legislative, Legislative Act. I, next, as of next week, I'll be meeting with Ms. Stephanie Reich, who is from the Architect, the American Institute of Architects, she is now an urban planner for Santa Monica, and this will be the first time in history that an architect works pro bono, does a drawing for the case management. I just completed, and I want to do this very quickly, I just completed, I'm getting some books for Audubon Junior High School, because my daughter, she couldn't come home with a math book, so I made contact with Steve Harvey, and he came up with some books for Audubon, along with some money from the state, so that they can have more books. And I just completed a gang suppression intervention and prevention program, which would be the, the Cafe, the Crenshaw's Expression Cafe, which will provide entertainment, and some music, and some artistic expression at Crenshaw High School, so we can decrease some of the frustration. Thank you for your time.
Jamie Green?
Good morning, council members. I'm Jamie Green, I live in downtown Los Angeles, where I'm an artist. I attended the Arts Park Health Aging Committee hearing on the matter of cultural affairs a couple of weeks ago, and I'm here to ask the question of all of you, what's up with cultural affairs, and what's going on with this woman who's running Renegade with our money? She's cutting off Barnesdale Park, she's cutting off art programs for children, she's cutting off arts programs for senior citizens, and yet, the city allows her to go off to foreign countries and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on junkets. Who manages a manager, a department manager? Don't you, the city council, look into these matters? And if not, why not? Forty-eight percent of the visitors who come to Los Angeles do not come from foreign countries, they come from California. Why are we sending this woman and her crew off on these junkets and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of higher tax dollars that should be going to community art? So what's up, council members? Why are we not addressing that problem immediately, before she goes off and spends more dollars?
Thank you. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion to have the posting and referral.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused to arrive late January 20th, January 28th, and February 25th, and those are all for city business, meet council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Viera-Gosa requests to be excu, to arrive late Wednesday and November 26th for city business, a motion is required.
Mr. Garcetti has moved, Mr. Viera-Gosa is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay, before going into closed session, Mr. City Attorney, do you have an announcement?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, 56.8, regarding items number 8 and 52, the chief legislative analyst will discuss negotiations concerning 1149 South Broadway, negotiations with New Pacific Realty, 801 South Grand with Arden Realty, and 600 slash 650 South Spring, at which the city currently is leasing space.
Okay, and with that, in California, law of the council will now adjourn into closed session. Sirens, please clear the chambers.
All right, we are now back in public session. Madam Clerk, what is before us? Madam President, numbers 8 and 52 were discussed in closed session and continued to December 2nd. All right. And on the settlement in the first case, item number 43, settlement in the amount of $745,000, and that's in the case of City versus Arnold Carlson. Members, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Item number 44 is settlement in the case of James Land versus City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $125,000. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Item number 45 is settlement in the case of Thomas Camo versus City of Los Angeles, it's a workers' comp case, $110,515, and $61.85 per week thereafter. That matters before us, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item is item number 46, and that's in, that is in the case of Chuck Kane versus City of Los Angeles, also a workers' comp case, and that's in the amount of $200,000. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. And item number 47 is also workers' comp, it's in the case of Robert Tichner versus City of Los Angeles, $133,283. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That matter is approved. And that clears the desk. All right, are there any announcements, members? Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Madam President. We'll have a meeting of our ITGS committee, let's begin at 1:45.
Okay, any other announcements, members? Any adjourning motions? We do have adjourning motions, so would everyone please stand? Mr. Labange?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Sad to announce the passing of Amir De Alame, and he was a very, very, very special man who took care of a wonderful garden in the Crystal Springs area in Griffith Park. Amir came to this country in 1962 from Iran, and he worked in Hollywood for many years in a market on Sunset Strip, but his passion and love was Griffith Park. And he would hike and take care of this wonderful garden that was named Amir's Garden, which had the beauty of light and water, and brought great flourishing plants and flowers to serve as a resting area for many of the hikers. And he was very proud to meet everybody who came, he was a great proponent of Griffith Park. I learned from the Department of Recreation Parks today of his passing. Amir De La Manme was one of the true angels in the City of Angels who served the city well, as a park volunteer in Griffith Park. He rests in peace.
Other adjourning tributes? Mr. Smith? Oh, Mr. Park.
I'm sorry, I missed the announcements, I'm waiting to learn.
All right, Mr. Smith?
Yes. Marty Bell was a well-known artist in the Chatsworth area, best known for her landscape architecture, much like Thomas Kinkade, and also, she occasionally did some paintings like Stan Klein, which is on the history of Los Angeles, and just a month before she passed, I got this painting of the Munchbox, which is a very famous little historical monument in the Chatsworth area. She did nice things about the Chatsworth community, did beautiful paintings about nature and beauty of the nature of the area. She passed away at 72 on October 12th, and survived by her husband, Steven, children Greg, Mark, and Jeff. Marty Bell.
Thank you. Mr. Zein?
Thank you, Madam President. Request for adjournment memory of California Highway Patrol Motorcycle Officer Dean Edward Biati. Officer Biati was born in Alexandria, Virginia, on August 16th, 1957, grew up in the south with his mother and father, Marlene and Leonard, his brothers David and Darrow, and his sister Kelly. Officer Dean Biati, a 24-year veteran of the Northern San Diego California Highway Patrol, died on November 19th, when his motorcycle ran into the back of a slow-moving recycling truck in the northbound lanes of California 163. Officers from San Diego County Law Enforcement Agencies formed a motorcade leading from Qualcomm Stadium to Rancho Bernardo. Dean was a loving father, devoted Christian, caring officer, and friend to many. There would be an empty space in the hearts of all who were blessed to have known him. He is survived by his wife, Rosa, six children, Farrah, Brett, Cindy, Annalise, Amanda, and Tammy. May Officer Dean Edward Biati rest in peace.
Thank you. I would also like to ask the council to adjourn in the name and memory of Rosalind Rogers. Rosalind was an 11th District constituent, but also the mother of Ron Rogers. She passed away after a long illness on Saturday, and she had been predeceased by her husband, Henry Rogers, a few years ago. She is survived by her son Ron, her daughter Marcia Ross, grandchildren Melissa Goddard and Michael Goddard, and brother-in-law Hal Ross, as well as Ron's wife, Lisa Speck. We will have all members on that. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I learned, reading Alumni Magazine just yesterday, of somebody who I had worked with, who had been a teacher of mine as well, who died in August, on August 19th, during the bombing of the United Nations Headquarters in Iraq, Arthur Helton, who was the Director of Peace and Conflict Studies, and a Senior Fellow for Refugee Studies at the Council on Foreign Relations. I knew him and worked with him at the Lawyers Committee for Human Rights, where for a dozen years, he directed, founded and directed the refugee studies there. He was probably the strongest voice, or one of the very strongest voices in the world for refugee rights, and worked very closely with the United Nations. He was in Iraq at the time, looking to assess the situation on the ground when he was tragically killed. He was an adjunct professor at Columbia Law School, he was just 54 years old, and really one of the, one of the great human rights heroes of our time was taken from us way, way too early, so may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. All right, there, that is the end of the adjourning tributes, but Mr. Parks did have an announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One announcement for Thursday, November 27th, at 11:00 a.m. Within the 8th District, the Greater Mount Olive Baptist Church is hosting their Community Awareness Block Party, where they intend to prepare Thanksgiving dinner and for less fortunate families, and that's at 659 West Colden Avenue.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll. We are adjourned.